All right. Good evening and welcome to the April workshop for our school board, Wasika School Board. Today is Thursday, April 8th, 2021 at 5:30 PM and we are in the Wasika Junior Senior High Performing Arts Center. So tonight's workshop, we just have three topics for discussion. We'll have a staffing update, a preview of what the calendar might look like for fall, and then also a preview for negotiations season, which is fast approaching. So I will turn it over to Mr. Hudson. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. And it's nice to be here with you tonight. And in a typical work session concept, we're just going to talk to some generalities about some things that are going to be upcoming over the next few weeks and months and allow the board to ask some questions and give some input or think about some questions you may have then about these things over the next few weeks and months. And so the first thing we'll start with is staffing for 2021-22, which is well underway. You've seen some things posted, the things that we need to hire for next year. We've had some retirements, we've had some resignations, moving through some things. So one of the key things to think about for staffing for next year is we are moving into, you know, what I want to call the right size of our staffing for next year when it comes to our revenues. And we know that we strategically spent that fund balance down over the last few fiscal years and we need to balance out our budget going forward. However, we want to make sure that we're able to provide as much programming as we have and we can for our students. And so what we're looking at for next year is if we were to make a one-time right-size adjustment, we would be looking at approximately seven FTEs of licensed staff that we would make an adjustment for down for next year. One thing we have a significant advantage in this scenario is that the federal dollars, and you've heard the term ESR before, that acronym, the ESR dollars for round one are still kind of being spent out. We're finalizing some of those expenditures. But then ESR two was what was passed in December and it actually was just finalized this last week at the state. And that's going to be $850,000 to our district. And one of the direct usages for that particular fund source is to reduce the need for layoffs and keep staff working so you're able to keep things the way you need it to. So what we've done with our principals, Elizabeth's been instrumental in this too, is through some non-renewals that we are going to be able to work through some attrition through retirements. And then as Dr. Miller works through his registration at the high school, we have the opportunity to reduce some sixth assignments for teachers. You know, in their contract, they teach five classes. They teach a sixth, obviously there's an additional stipend for that. And to the point where, you know, we had 67 sixth assignments happening this year, which is about one and a half-ish FTE if you were to put that into actual teacher. And so between some class size changes, and what I mean by that is just less students coming through a particular grade level, and some intervention services being done a little differently this year, we're looking like we're going to be able to target three and a half FTEs for next year, being able to just go ahead and reduce based on what we have for happening right now in our district. Within the plan of the other, you know, if you're still targeting that seven, there are three and a half then, which would be about $350,000, we could backfill with that ESR dollars to be able to keep that going forward. And then revisit this, of course, in spring of '22. Do we need to make that other three and a half staff adjustment? Or have things changed with legislation? Has the enrollment changed? So we can make those changes. We also know that ESR three is coming down the pike too. And initial estimates for us now, we're looking at about $1.8 million for that, which would be a similar usage. So we could get to the point where next year, let's say through retirements, maybe we have to, we can do two and we can hit another year going, you know? And so when you think about an FTE of about $90,000-200,000 per year, you know, it doesn't mean it's sustainable for 10 years with this type of money, but it does get us through a two- or three-year plan to be able to right-size our staff and not impact our student programming. So I'm feeling comfortable that we're doing what we need to do to right-size based on the number of students we have coming through. We do have, we have had the good fortune to run some classes, particularly at our junior, senior high, with some pretty low class sizes of late. And we want to make sure we maintain that wherever we can, but there might be some spots where we could take advantage of distance learning. Take advantage of if we have three students that want to take that particular class, we can't run the class, but can we partner with Faribault? Can we partner with another neighboring district, this cooperative? So there's some exciting things happening right now with registration for staffing. But it shouldn't be anything that is, I don't want to use the word reduction, really, because we're not reducing anywhere that we wouldn't normally be reducing based on registration and enrollment anyway. I think that's a key point to remember for us. It's not a, we would love to have these extra, we always love to have these extra folks, of course we do. But we would be looking at, you can't have 14 kids in a classroom at any grade level. And so we would have to make that adjustment anyway. But we're also working towards our budgeting with that too. Some of our tier-one and out-of-field permission teachers, which is just a handful, those positions are posted now too. We have the obligation each year to try to find a fully licensed teacher for those areas. Special education tends to be a large focus area for that. But we're posting those and working through them and we have good staff in those positions. So we hope to be able to retain those staff if we can. But we do have an obligation to try to find a licensed teacher, which only makes sense what we've got going on there for that. Just a couple other key points on staffing before opening up for questions on this topic. So we did, you saw in the update last week, you'll see next week on your board agenda, our new food service director has accepted the position to begin in July 1st. Mr. Larson is coming from a position where when the school year is over, his current position does not work summers. And so he'll be able to work somewhat with Jason Forshee in July to work on the transition timeline as we move into, move into the new fiscal year for that. You will see that come to you for approval next week with his contract. With that, very similar contract to our current director. So you won't see anything significantly changed in that regard for that. Our area learning center, Jake Hager has done some nice work with increasing the number of students that we serve in that program. We currently do offer PE and art at our ALC, but it is one of his other content area teachers teaching a section of art at the end of the day, or PE at the end of the day in addition to science or English. And so what we're able to do, again, he worked with Elizabeth on this and myself, for next year, the budget allows us to hire a teacher for the ALC to teach halftime art and halftime PE. So that's going to be our goal for next year. Now, we were very clear with Mr. Hager and he understands this a lot. He understands this very well. This is a one-year position based on the enrollment he has coming. If the program doesn't sustain it, it won't be something we'll be able to sustain, but hopefully we'll be able to because it's, his team has created an incredible program for those students. That will allow the content area teachers to focus back in other section to keep class sizes down on their regular content area and also hopefully hire a teacher that's licensed in that area to serve those students in those elective classes. So I'm excited about that opportunity coming forward for us as well. Last two things, just quickly on this topic. We also are looking at an 18- to 21-year-old transition with Southwest Metro. So as you know, Southwest Metro serves our Level Four students who have, you know, some of those needs there and that right now they're housed at the central building. We're looking at a classroom to be able to expand that to an 18- to 21-year-old transition program. We don't have that right now that we offer in our district, so students are having to go elsewhere for those services to get the level of need that they need to support themselves as they move into their adult lives. And so working with Southwest Metro, we're looking, Heather Harms is working with that transition program. We're looking at that being finalized here in the next few weeks, planning for next year, which is exciting. We want to have, the more students that we can have and serve right here in our community, the better. And then the last thing I would mention quickly about staffing, and it kind of ties to our negotiations preview somewhat too, is that knowing that our budget is healthy, our fund balance is healthy, we have the one-time dollars coming in from the federal government, but those are not necessarily going to be long-term sustainable dollars. We have to make sure we do the right thing for our fund balance in our district. And so from a staffing perspective, negotiations are really going to be focused on, I think, how do we recruit and retain the best staff that we have? We want to make sure that we're continuing to pay people fairly, that we're continuing to support with the budget that we have. And I think from a staffing perspective, we have candidates. The fact that we had as many candidates as we did for our food service director position, which is a very challenging position to fill, was a luxury. And it's not by accident. It's because of the work that we do as a district to support those contracts and to support the work of each other. And so I feel good about that. So for, that was my five-minute staffing update with things. Next week, you will see the non-renewals come for action at the board as well as the food service director piece. And then we'll run through our formal timeline of hiring and any other contract adjustments we have to have into May. Questions, thoughts?
I have a question. As far as K through six next year, what are some of our target numbers for the different grades?
Yeah, high teens is where they all are right now.
High teens.
High teens, yeah. Is that accurate, Elizabeth, for the most part?
Yeah, high teens, some low twenties. And when we present the monthly enrollment report, really that far right-hand corner gives on average what those class sizes are. And so that's what we're really trying to maintain at this point. So it just depends on the class as well at that time.
And normally those class sizes are more like low to mid twenties, right? So we're projecting to keep them a little bit smaller next year, is that right?
Yeah, we've recently, over the last several years, been quite lucky in our class sizes being right around that 20, low twenties mark. And right now, right now, we're kind of making some decisions. Intervention teacher or an extra section?
Gotcha.
What kind of best serves those grade levels? Because 25 with an intervention teacher might be, might be just as good as 18. And that's some of the things our principals are working through right now.
And I was, my question is on, you talked about, you kind of touched on recruitment a little bit, like what are, what positions are we actively recruiting for right now? And I guess what is our current recruitment strategy?
Yeah. You want to talk a little bit about?
Sure. Yep. So some of the open postings that we have, and please feel free to look at our website anytime, and we are also working with Jenny Penya to try to push those out on a regular basis through our Facebook feed. So we currently have a choir director open here at Junior High High School, also a math position open at the Junior High High School. A lot of the postings you're seeing right now are more that tier-one and/or out-of-field positions that we are legally obligated to post for 60 days before we are able to offer another continuing contract to a teacher. So those are the ones that we currently have open. You may see more, just depending upon if we have any more resignations or retirements, but those are just our key ones at this time.
Okay. And are we able to go to recruitment fairs right now and stuff?
Most of them are virtual.
Okay.
Yeah. And the good news, if there is any, is that right now the job market is pretty tight in terms, because most districts are reducing or adjusting in some ways. And so I've been reached out to already by several candidates looking for different positions who are out there in the market. So I think the market bodes well for us to get some quality candidates.
Any other questions on this topic? All right.
Okay, very good. The next one, and this is really, I'm hoping for some board input on this topic here. And this, I think it's really important to note that this is not a decision mode right now. We are really in some draft mode of what we could do. So as we've been talking as an administrative team about next year, one of the things we've been thinking about is how do we capitalize on some of the exciting things that are happening this year? Would you mind passing that down, Dave? Just a quick, for a second. How do we take advantage of some of the great work that's happening this year with our staff and for our students, particularly when it comes to collaboration and supporting all students? However, we also have to recognize that we need to serve our community and we need to make sure that we are having students in school, in the buildings, being served the way we need them to be served. And so it's about balancing all of those factors. And so right now, my goal is to be able to take the next, really 30 days or so to talk to, get board feedback, talk to our staff, get some family feedback about this through, I'm not sure if we're going to, how we're going to do a survey or some targeted listening sessions, but I want to get some family feedback on this too, with hopes of coming back in at the May board meeting with, here's a proposal for the board to consider about next year. And I think it's really important to note that what we're thinking about is a pretty, at its base level, a regular calendar, five-day-a-week in-school calendar. That's the plan. What we've been thinking about though is, is there a way to, like I said, to get some of those advantages of having a work day, a distance learning day, a PLC day in their management, in a manageable way? And so what you have in front of you are really two different perspectives that we could look at. And the first one, I'm going to refer to you, the one that says eight or nine DL days on the top. And what that would, what that would mean was, it would be a proposal that one day per month, we would take advantage of a distance learning Monday. And our staff would be able to work together to do the planning for whatever they need to be working on, do their PLC time. I think it's important to note that we would eliminate the early outs under that model and so we wouldn't have a half-day at any point. It would just be that one day per month. I do know that we've had conversations as a leadership team about having to firm up and structuralize what that distance learning day looks like. Right now, as our staff is doing a great job of doing the best they can, it still is kind of teacher-by-teacher as to what you're getting a little bit on that Monday. And so we need that to be more systemic, need to be more consistent if we're going to do this. The other thing that would need to happen if this model were to move forward with is legislatively we'd have to be allowed to. And what I mean by that is right now, current statute allows for districts to take up to five e-learning days or distance learning days in the event of inclement weather, if you have a plan for that. Other than that, there's no statutory allowance to provide distance learning, other than, now currently it's in the executive order, which we assume at some point will expire and move on to what's next. And so if the state legislature decides that you're not going to provide distance learning for your students unless you're an accredited, approved online school, which we're not going to be, we don't, I don't think we have the resources to be able to do that for our students, then you don't provide distance learning. Then it's moot. Then this particular model is moot. But I do want to start the discussion that if we can do this, should we? And do we want to? And the reason I put eight or nine on here is because I squared off May 16th as, do we need a day, two weeks from the end of the school year or not? That might be something to discuss. We have May 6th as an in-service day, so maybe we don't need a day in May. That's just, that would be the conversation to be had going forward. And so that's kind of what I'm looking at to kind of maybe thread the needle a little bit if we can. It's not realistic, I don't think, to have every Monday that way for anybody. I also don't want to get so spread apart that they're not meaningful. So if we meet every other month, is that really all that meaningful? That was my question for that. So that's one option that we've kind of got on the discussion and I sent it out to the district leadership team on Monday as they're sending me their feedback, things to think about. Elizabeth had a really important point to think about for some of our staff. Just talk about that for a quick moment.
Right, yep. So this is definitely addressing more our licensed staff. The question comes of just what would we need to do to prepare for our non-licensed staff that are connected to student contact days? So would we be able to provide meaningful opportunities for them on these days or what would that mean? The main two areas that would be impacted would probably be our paraprofessionals and our food service department. And regarding food service department, depending upon what they can do as well legislatively next year, does that, are we able to provide services those days or are we not? Right now, we're acting under quite a few waivers and so we're able to do that this year. Again, it's a lot of what ifs and unknowns, but just having that conversation on the table so we can work through it.
Yep.
Yeah. And I think that, and this operates under the assumption that we're allowed to do that. So that's just one piece I wanted to add to the discussion. And then the other option is, or something to think about in our, in our calendar process is that if we're not allowed to do that, let's, distance learning's not an option. I still think that what we're finding is having an entire day to work together in between some specifically designated student contact time where appropriate, has been really helpful for our staff, more so than an early out provides. And so I do still think we would want to consider removal of the early outs in our calendar and then utilizing some of the already-in-place in-service and prep days. But then if we were to add, I have about every other month on here circled on this next calendar, adding four more staff workdays into there with no early outs as prep days. Now, that would not be a student contact day, so we're not talking, because we're getting a lot of distance learning. So it would just be a staff day if we were to go that direction. And why only four? Because we have to have a minimum of 165 days in our calendar for our students. And our K3 calendar, Hartley is typically built, it has been built, at 169 days. And so four brings us down to that 165-day minimum. And so that would be something to consider if we wanted to provide that. Still taking advantage of the in-service and the staff days that are built throughout the school year, so they have roughly once a month to be able to working on, work on things as a staff. The other thing we'd have to think about here is that we don't have any days to give then in the weather. And so we would have to make a commitment as a district, I think it would be wise to make a commitment as a district early on, that snow days are going to be distance learning days. They're going to be something that's going to be an e-learning, whatever the grade level system works out, because otherwise you have to make up every day that we had off. And that's not fun for anybody to organize and try to coordinate. And so I don't know, I would love to hear your feedback on those, on these two ideas. Again, this is not a decision-making conversation. This is just a, for the next month, I want to be having these conversations with us, with the community, with our staff, so that in May, hopefully, we can leave the school year with our parents, because legislatively it might not be done yet. We maybe can leave the school year saying, if it's a goal, we're going to do this. If it's not a goal, we're going to do this. Or we're just going to do this. So I would prefer to avoid an August change this year. We don't want to do that to folks if we can help it. I do want to, I do want to take some time to talk a little bit about some conversations we've had about conferences. But first, I want to get your feedback on this concept, if you have any at this time.
I think that second one, your student contact days as far as your paras and out-of-field and food service, it doesn't affect them at least, correct? Because they would be losing a half-day anyways in the early outs, correct?
No, they do work full days on early.
On early outs? So this would still affect them?
But we could maybe, so this would be a part of that conversation is right now, we build in professional development, I will speak to paras at this point, during those early outs. So maybe we shift that to some of these full days. So I think there's opportunity with both of these. It's just kind of getting all of those ideas out on the table.
Yeah, we have to find, we have to find something for those staff members to do on those days to honor their contracts without it being just find something to do. We want to find something valuable to do, obviously, for those staff members.
Didn't both of these models say no early outs?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. So in both cases, I guess if, in the second one, you could kind of say those early outs turn into those staff days.
You could.
With the exception of, yeah.
Right. We would just, again, need to work on the planning part of it because sometimes we do use our internal staff as well to help with some of those concepts that they're working on. But again, and we can work through this. It is just kind of having those verbal conversations and things we need to be looking for.
Yeah, there's, and there's two parts to the student contact requirements. The first is a certain number of hours we have to have in a year. And we're, we're well above the number of hours we have to have, that's fine. But 165 is still the minimum number of days and that's where we run tight with Hartley. We don't want to get into a situation where we're not, you know, dealing with that.
I was just going to say that I know the whole virus situation has caused us a lot of headaches and struggles, but I think we've also have worked with that situation and we've improvised and we've thought out of the box. And I think we've found that if they're done properly, these Mondays that we've had and do have can be a really good thing. So I would like to see as best we can, we carry on with that. I'm not saying they have to be exactly like they are now, but I would, I would not like to see them go away completely. I would hope we could find some middle ground somewhere and continue on with some of that. And I think this moves in that direction.
Yeah. We are seeing a level of professional collaboration from our staff that they haven't had the opportunity to do in the past. That's true. That's, that's, I have a hard time with finding anybody with an argument for that. What I do think we also have to be realistic about though is that it is inconsistent right now and we'd have to systematically, what the student experiences on that day, we'd have to norm that a little bit stronger than we are right now. And that's, but that's manageable. We can do that.
Well, that's what I meant by it. If they're productive.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
If they are, I would hope we could continue on with the concept or the idea.
Very good.
But yes, they have to be productive. We can't just have them to have them or just keep them to keep them. They've got to work, so.
Very good.
Yeah, I just think we should get, you know, feedback from the parents, you know, because I think it's quite hard, you know, to have every week, only four days a week, you know? I think I like, well, those propositions are, you know, I just need to think more, but I like them both. You know, I think the second one, you know, the half-days, you know, for me, sometimes it was more difficult than, you know, than it should have been. But, you know, like I said, get the feedback of the parents, you know, what are we going to do this one day at the month, you know, for the daycare or stuff? What we are, are they comfortable? Because I think many parents will say, you know, half-days was difficult for me. Maybe one day a month, we can figure it out. I think those are good propositions we need to think through and then get feedback and just decide which way we want to go. But both of them are, I think you guys thought through and this is, you know, we just need to follow up for the next steps.
Thank you.
If, if the legislature comes back and says, we could do either one of these, do you see an advantage to doing one over the other or not at this time?
I think there's an advantage to the proposal with the distance learning days from the sense of, as we get better at that, not only are we working on that opportunity for our staff to work together, but to teach those skills with our students to be able to work independently on those given days and be able to move through that, which is something I think we're, we're getting better at, but we have room to grow on. I also think that, you know, the notice, the option with the last four days, so option B, we'll call it for this very moment, that takes advantage of days that are already in the calendar, which if you ask a teacher, they probably would tell me, we already have things to do on those days. And so we're not going to have a lot of PLC time on those days because we already have things to do, whether it's grading or in-service time, whatever. And their contract does call out how many in-service days they have to have, how many workshop days they have to have. So we want to be respectful of that. So it gives us and the staff the most flexibility. We went with this, the first one I gave you, option A, I guess. But again, I think the biggest kicker there is maximizing the approach that students get a valuable day out of that, as well as it being manageable for our families, as Adita mentioned. Because really, the family's experience only changes four times in this second option, whereas it would change eight or nine times in the first option. One interesting note here, just, it's a tidbit because I circled it, the 17th of January is MLK Day, which we, which this year we opted to move that day before the school year started so that we could give that as a holiday. In this particular model right now, not that I wouldn't be open to feedback, the students would be home that day, but then our staff would report, which currently it's a, it's a school day on this approved calendar, so. But I think if we want to continue to support the concept of Martin Luther King Day being a holiday, maybe splitting the difference and, you know, our staff may have some work to do, but our kids are home. That might be a way to get through. And then we look at the 22-23 calendar, we might just want to make that a holiday, a day off. And we'll look at that, that's another conversation for the different day.
The other one that I have is, is by doing it every Monday or Friday, depending upon which one you're looking at, are there some classes that are every other day or certain, certain days that that's going to take away from one, one group or another?
Sure, sure. I don't know the answer to that, but that's a good consideration. Yeah, thank you. Good.
Yeah, I agree with Adita. I would love to hear what parents, what their feedback is on this. As a parent, I dreaded early outs. It was just a ridiculous disruption to the day. I don't know why it was, but it just was. And, but I, you did it because if, if teachers need that, I totally understand that staff needs that time and I understood why. So for me, I could, I would have greater value of a whole day that I would just plan for, to be home with my kids as opposed to just...
as opposed to just that hour and a half. But, but I, that's just my perspective. I'd be curious what other families have to say. Obviously, childcare would be an issue. Food on those days would be an issue. If we, if we went with the during, distance learning option, we would need to make sure that we provide distance learning support for those who are in school age care. So, you know, those kinds of things that I know we're doing this year, but that would have to continue next year. If we didn't have the distance learning, if we went with a non-distance learning day option, then that would be one less thing to, to consider. But I, I support either option. I, especially if, if this is, if this is the direction in professional development that our staff is really looking, would, would be excited about, then I, I totally support doing this. But I would love to get the parent feedback on that, so.
I, I, one, one final wrinkle into that is if we're allowed to do distance learning, then we may also have distance learners. Students that have just chosen distance learning, which it only, that only breeds and that plays into that is we don't know what other legislative tails come with that. Extra prep time for teachers or whatever things that might end up into that. So we might have some days there that help us meet some of those requirements too. But, but I'll work with, with continue, we'll get some feedback from parents and families. And our plan, like I said, would be, it's the May twentieth meeting, would be to come to the board with, here's what we think would be a proposal on this idea for next year.
Cool.
Great. And the other topic on calendar that I wanted to mention quickly is about elementary conferences. And one thing that we did this year, when it just happened to be because of the way the, we returned back to hybrid learning and everything, was we pushed back our elementary conferences into March. And that went very well. And so as I've been talking to Ben O'Brien and his staff at Hartley, there's, because they have the entrance conferences, that few days, Tuesday, Wednesday after Labor Day there, you know, that October conference is a little early for them in terms of what they really could communicate with families. And so what they would, are considering right now is a proposal to move those con, first round of conferences at Hartley to the end of the first trimester. So that first week of December, last week of November, wherever that first trimester lands. If you recall, it was a few years ago, we did something like that. And what happened there was we ended up with, the WIS students went one day, the Hartley kids were off another day. And this was a really a, a challenging situation for families to know who was going to school on what day. And so as I, as I asked John Hopmeyer about that, you know, his concern is we don't have that two days after Labor Day entrance conferences with the WIS students. And so waiting until the end of the trimester is too late for us. So October is really an ideal time for us right now to do conferences. And so we talked about, why would it have to be the same? Why does it have, you know, there are two different buildings with two different sets of programming, age of kids? Well, it came down to, what day do my kid, does, does my kid go to school? And who, I can't keep track that my third grader is home that day, my fifth grader goes in. And so what I've asked them to provide for us, particularly Ben, is if you want to move to a conference schedule at the end of the first trimester, how do we do that without changing the student contact days for next year's calendar? So, which means they're probably doing it all in the evenings instead of one full day, which is what the calendar builds in now. And if, and if him, in partnership with his staff, wants to try that, I would be supportive of us considering that change as a board to approve that. Because I'm not, I want those conferences to be the most productive conferences they can be for families and students, not tied to a calendar. But I also am a hundred percent respectful of, you know, with my own four kids, who goes to school on what day is, is sometimes half the battle. And so I don't want to create any more of that for families than we have to. So I don't have a particular proposal for you right now. But I wanted to just share with you in this format, something we're thinking of and see if any of you felt strongly one way or the other as we work through this, this idea.
I kind of think as a parent, and if you have a parent, I mean, well, you have kids in multiple buildings, to not have your conferences all on the same day would be somewhat helpful because you don't always have time to get to everyone's, to go to all the different buildings. But at the same time, it's, there's pros and cons both ways on that.
Different kids out on different days or conferences on different days?
I know. But I mean, but you did talk about this possibility of maybe continuing virtual conferences as an option. So that might help parents out a lot if, if that is still an option next year.
Yeah, and I've talked about that. And I just, I just, this morning was my last conversation with Ben about that. And I know Jason and John feel the same way, that we certainly want to continue the efficiencies and the support of a virtual conference option for families, knowing that we a hundred percent want to support the families that want to come in or some families that we encourage want to come in, we want to talk to you in person. So I think as much as we've probably exhausted the term by now, a hybrid format of conferences is probably in our future. And that's, that's discussion statewide.
Yeah.
Because particularly as a high school or junior, senior high teacher, to know who I'm talking to at what time and not have to find that kid's folder at that time and you're in third hour and, but I'm prepared, I'm talking to, you know, Joe's dad right now. Got it, I'm prepared, I can have a quick ten-minute conversation moving forward. The efficiencies of that have, have been something we want to continue for those that will like it.
I think the one that I've heard the most complaints about is being able to get to multiple buildings with multiple children.
Yep.
So.
I just was going to say, I agree with you. I don't think the, the concept of virtual conferences is going to go away. I'm not, I don't think that we're, we would move to virtual conferences a hundred percent. And, and I agree that, you know, parents and teachers should have the option of an in-person conference if they want it or they feel it's needed. But I can, I can see over time, more and more conferences being virtual.
My comment is, I always struggle with conferences to be the person, in person, and wait and wait and wait. With some, many kids, I don't have this pleasure to stay and wait. I would love to come in, have a meeting and go home and go to another conference. It's mean whatever we can figure it out, you know, in person or, you know, online.
You'd appreciate a schedule.
Yeah, I prefer a schedule that I can plan because I really can't, even I love to. But sometimes, and it's understandable, you would just wait and wait. But it's just, it's not waste of the time, but it's lost time that we could use differently. It's mean if we can figure it out, any better way for parents and teachers that, you know, we can make it. Sometimes I didn't even make it because I just didn't plan for three hours. And then I, my two kids, sorry. You know, we just, how, we can figure it out, the process to make it better, that would be beneficial for everybody.
Well, and I find that for my own, my own children now this year, having the option to do it virtually from my office at four-thirty or five o'clock, rather than have to try to leave work a half an hour early to be where I need to be, then I can just continue on with my day. And I think I've seen more conferences happen this year, just at lunchtime in the office or take a quick fifteen-minute break than, if that works for your family.
Yeah, exactly.
Good, very good. Okay, thank you for that feedback. That's great. Anything else on the calendar topic?
I, I just want to say, like, I think if, if Hartley can figure out a way to have their conferences when they want to, where it's not having kids out of school on different, you know, if, if they, if they have kids, if they do conferences on a day where there's, or school isn't in session anyway, that's awesome. But if they're able to make it work with the calendar, I go for it. So I, I don't mind when it is, as long as we're not like having all these multiple buildings off on different days.
Very good, very good.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, and then the last topic for tonight's work session is more of just a, kind of a preview of the process because I know several of you have been part of the negotiation in the past or are on the negotiation committee right now, working forward. So I just kind of wanted to give a quick update of how things, how things go with contract negotiations and, and how, I guess it would be great for me to get feedback on, on how we'd like them to go. If, because, because I have some ideas of how this works, but I have not been through it with this particular team yet. First thing I know, Caitlin's working on getting a meeting scheduled with the negotiation team. Hopefully yet this month, which is Adita and, and Julie and Charlie working through what our process is going to be and what we want to look at for philosophy. And Elizabeth, part of that, we talk about money and budget and how that wants to, strategies are going to be. So the process typically, as I've worked through it, is we'll have, oftentimes a group will propose language first. And they'll give us some ideas of how they want to work through any language ideas. All the groups have submitted their intent to negotiate, I believe now. So we have all of those. In a, in, in many years, we're having those conversations now in April and May. What we've heard now from our groups is that there's just so much influx at the legislation, legislature right now that they don't think there would be anything accomplished by meeting right now in April and May. And so, and typically, the teachers tend to lead the charge on the negotiation process in terms of we work through that first and then the other groups kind of see they're the highest volume bargaining group that we have. And our leadership of, of WA has asked that we start in July, after the legislature's wrapped up with that. And so just for the board's reference, well, you won't be hearing anything really about negotiations as a whole board until mid to late summer, likely with that. And I'm comfortable with that because they're right. Right now, the House proposal is two and two on the formula. The Senate proposal is zero and zero. Odds are they're going to land somewhere in between there, which is real money for what we can do to support our employees. We want to make sure we know what's happening there with that. So we're looking at the groups coming together here probably in July. We'll hear the language proposal. Typically, I would ask the bargaining group to present the first financial proposal to see what they're looking at, to give us some, some parameters. In our first meeting, we'll have a conversation about ground rules and about what we expect and how we'd like to get through everything and, and have some general conversation about parameters, what we're trying to accomplish. One thing we have going for us, which private companies do not all the time, is our finances are pretty open books. And so we pretty much, here's what we have, and here's what we want to be able to do to support you. It really becomes as much about evening out the piece of the pie for our staff as it does taking care of folks, because we want to take care of folks. We just want to make sure that our, our custodial staff is taken care of as much as our teachers, as much as any group, right? And we have to help them, support them. And sometimes even having conversations about, we sometimes have to advocate for our own, our own staff in the sense that, yes, I know that's really going to be a great deal for the people that have been here for thirty years. Is that going to really help us recruit new staff if that's our starting wage? To think about it that way, working through the process. So our goals for negotiations, as I mentioned it about a half an hour ago now, really is we want to create contracts that recruit people to stay in our district. And what I've noticed about several of our contracts is that we are very competitive at entry level. Over the course of ten to fifteen years, at times, some of our regional competitors do catch up to us. And so we want to think about that in our particular negotiations around this time. So I'm not necessarily, maybe Elizabeth, she hasn't heard me say this yet. She might not love this. But I don't necessarily always say it's going to be one percent across the schedule. It might be forty cents here and seventy cents there. So make sure that we are doing what we need to do for each individual employee as they move through their career for that. So as I mentioned, Adita and, and Julie and Charlie are a committee. So as we meet with, with the groups, we'll report back to the larger board throughout the course of the process. If something's going to be especially contentious or something's going to drag out longer than it needs to, we, we might give you more updates. Otherwise, hopefully, it's, we're starting to meet with the teachers next week. And the next time we talk to you, here's our TA. That's our, that's our goal, tentative agreement is what that looks like. So let's hope for that. Doesn't always work that way, we'll see how it goes this particular year. And then obviously, you have the opportunity to see the full tentative agreement as a board before you would vote to approve that contract for our staff. Anything else? Elizabeth sent out the website last night to you all to see if, in case you hadn't had a chance to look at contracts yet. You can, they're all on there.
You know, another goal of ours is just, since we do have a multiple, multiple contracts, so we have group contracts and we have individual contracts. Another goal of ours is when it's appropriate and it, and it, and it works, we try to keep consistent language throughout of that, throughout all of them, just so we're able to accurately implement the language that we're proposing. So that's another goal of ours is, okay, if we change language in here, how does that affect other groups as well? So just trying to keep that consistency when it is appropriate.
Yeah. I think one of the best strategies of doing that is knowing what's in the contract already.
Yep.
And I'll, I'll give the example of the job sharing with the teachers and a potential agreement to, how do we, if two teachers want to share a classroom, how do we make that work? That was an idea that came up in staffing as a potential option. And we could do an MOU, a MOU on that, but we didn't, we don't need to because everything in there is already covered somewhere else in our contract. So as we walked through that with WEA and showed them that, look, here's your, here's your tenure piece of it. Here's the leave piece of it, here's the salary piece of it, here's the benefits piece of it. We don't need another, another letter of agreement. We're already covered. That, I think, is, is one of the key tools that a negotiation team can do is not over complicate the contract in areas it doesn't need to be. I share the example of, and this is just, this is a funny story because I was negotiating a contract in Mankato where, where over the course of twenty years, new articles had been added. And each article defined full-time employee different way. So in the course of the contract, we had full-time employee identified five different ways. And they were referencing a specific benefit for that. So you qualify for this benefit if you're over this many hours. You qualify for this benefit if you're over this many days. And it was just not where we want to go. And so ours are not built that way, which is, which is fortunate. But that's why we have to be cautious about adding just an additional LM article just to have that language. It's already covered somewhere else, there's no need to over complicate it for that, so, good. And that's just, like I said, just the five-minute overview I wanted to give the group tonight. I look forward to working with the, the team, but then also the whole board. Fortunately, we have contracts that you've obviously done a lot of great work on over the last several rounds. And so, and our employees are fantastic to work with. I don't anticipate this will be any different. A good process.
You have a question?
No, no, I don't know. This is completely new for me. I'm excited to learn new things and.
Yep. This will be my third round. And I learned really quickly that Elizabeth is the most knowledgeable on all of this. But, no, she has the most history of all of the contracts. So she's that person who are like, what did we do in two thousand and two? And she'd be like, well, no. But no, Eric, I, that was a really good summary. I mean, I think the, the two times that we've done it, one, one contract, we, we gave the same percentage across the board. And the next contract, we did it individual cells. And it's just, it, it really just depends on what the need is for the district and for the group that you're working with. And then those language items are, sometimes you get stuck on a language item more than you do on the dollars, which is interesting. But, but I asked Elizabeth to share all the contracts because that's really where you're going to see all those language items, like those, the paid time off. Like that's usually a big thing that comes up everywhere. Not, I shouldn't say big thing, it's usually one thing that comes up every year. A couple of years ago, in the teachers, the WE contract, we added in the, the ULA language, the unrequested leave of absence. Yeah, so that was, so that, we got added into the contract a couple of years ago. And so, so things like that, it's just, it's, it's a really, it's a, if you're on the committee, you learn all these, these, these little things. And so I just want to make sure that those of you that weren't on the committee kind of have a sense of what the process is too, so. But, and then we'll have, we can do closed sessions to negotiate or to really come, talk about what we want and how we want to negotiate. And, and the committee won't do that without the whole board, so.
Correct. It's a, it's actually a fun process because we're, once you get into it and you realize that we're actually on the same team with this particular set of resources that we have, then it goes, goes well most of the time. If there's anything that ever gets a little bit tricky at times is language because there's no such thing as free language. Everything costs something. And I think that's the biggest, sometimes, discussion sticking point with those negotiations is, it doesn't cost you anything. Well, actually, everything does cost us something, so.
Well, and you'll, you'll often hear us talk about salary, but also total package. So salary is one part of it, but there's benefits and other things that go into the total package. So, so you'll, you'll see that the total package dollar amount is what we as a board, that's, that's what really is what we're voting on, so.
And we have a unique, speaking of that, we have a unique setup here where we have a January one renewal for our insurance rates. That's relatively rare. And so as we, we know right now what our insurance rates are going to be for this fall for our staff. Now, we also know that January one, it could change. So we have, it's a little, it changes negotiations a little bit in a positive way to start, but makes it a little bit more of a dice roll the second half of this first contract year. Whereas some districts who have July one renewals, they wait until they know what their new rate's going to be. But then you have the whole year, you know what your rate's going to be. So it's just an interesting part of total package that comes down to it, so. Folks tend to see the increase more because if you, if your salary goes up and your insurance premium goes up, that's just one change. Instead of your salary going up in August, but then in January, it goes back down a little bit because insurance changed. That's, that's just a different little unique piece of our, of our, we've done business, worst for us. That's a peep thing, so it really is what it is. Very good.
Any questions or comments at this point for negotiations coming up? Any questions or comments at this point for negotiations coming up? And I will say, we have an exceptionally positive relationship with all of our union, all of our groups and the individuals as well. Every time, it's a super positive experience, and it's really, it's a cool way to meet some of the employees that we have, so. All right, well, if there's no other questions, any other topics? We're good? Welcome, Katie. So our next meeting will be next week, Thursday, so April 15, at 5:30, and that will still be here in the Forming Arts Center. And we are making plans to move back to the boardroom at Central Building for May, so that'll be exciting. But next week, we'll still be here at 5:30, and the agenda should be going out tonight, hopefully, so, or tomorrow. Tonight?[1788.75]